I said, I might get there in one or two days. See you, Michael.
I told him I'd get there, I may go tomorrow.
I didn't think of how this week, if she was due, before July or something. So y'all picked our small, how does week of the year?
My biggest step is I'm going to go to a place. It's my weakness.
Yeah, because he'd regret it himself.
Well, we get our cards. You know what I'm saying? Some go with it. I think that's why Frank wants me to just add all the views. Even though I'm the youngest man in this town right now.
We're going to the lake next weekend, this is the first time we've been to the lake. Second time.
Yeah, lovely.
Yeah, remember it's on time.
Close to being on time.
Two minutes to, I told you so.
This is, this is six o'clock, we need to throw it up. Thank you.
Two minutes to.
Have I grown a beard?
It's so good to see everyone's face.
You don't recognize us?
Did you have a beard when you hit?
So I did, I, once COVID hit, I started to grow it out. I, I went about, I went about two months and it got pretty, pretty bad. So this is a good compromise that my wife looks at.
I can appreciate that. Is your mom getting out anything else?
Maybe she goes to the store and I'll go. No, I'm not going out.
You're not walking? I see you walking.
Yeah, but. Yeah, I walk.
I talk to her fully, she'll blow this one. She's the same, same way you are, she says she just can't let that.
Yeah.
He won't bring dinner up.
No, I don't.
So you don't know who that. I got, no, I, I, you'll appreciate what I asked Mr. Smith to do. I said, since he was the oldest representative of council, I figured he'd be.
And I'm the only one being abused. I'm the only one being abused.
So we're abusing him by making him abuse.
It's called, it's called urn, sir. If you talk to him, you want to hear.
I have seven o'clock. Like to call the regular scheduled meeting of Franklin City Council to order. Appreciate everyone coming out tonight. I would ask you to please silence your cellphone and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have citizens time, we had one person to sign up to speak publicly. And then I think we had one electronic. So I would ask James Ellison to please come forward, state your name and address, please.
Okay, Jimmy, James Ellison, and I live across the street from Mr. Conchins there, and across the street from your, from Dave. Anyway, over on Crescent Tribe, one thirty-two Crescent. And I moved here to Franklin about eight years ago. I'm an attorney, I've been practicing law since nineteen eighty-one, mostly in Newport News and mostly in federal court. But I do have an office in Franklin Business Center. I think I'm a small driver of economic development. Because I get clients out here and they say, well, you got a great coffee place and you got served and you got, anyway. The reason I'm here is recycling. I don't think it was a good idea and it doesn't sound like there was much of a reason to stop it. I understand there's a minimal amount of savings. But, I mean, are we all smarter here in Franklin than every other city in, you know, Newport New, Norfolk, Portsmouth? Everybody else does it. And I understand that Ms. Jarrett said that, you know, they ain't really recycling and that it's all going to the landfill. And if all that's true, well, maybe it is, but, like I said, all the other cities don't feel that way. Anyway, that is the main reason I'm here. I'm here to, my lone voice of protest that we should somehow reconsider. Because I know this Friday is the last time and I'm just, you know, I know I can bring them up here to the dumpsters or I can go over to the alleyway and make it legal and do it too, but, anyway. And then the other thing since I'm up here is the Confederate monument has not been moved yet. So I'm just kind of pushing for that too, because I think that's, need to move that too. Anyway, those are my comments and I thank y'all for allowing me to speak and God bless all of y'all.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. I, I think if you stick around, you'll find an answer to one of your questions. I believe. And the other one, I think as far as recycle is concerned, we have, we are definitely, just typically, we don't respond to these things, but I think the public needs to know. Our recycle has not been recycled for the past year and a half, almost two years. Smithfield has stopped it. Some of the other municipalities are looking at it. They have not made a decision. We made a decision based on the fact that it was going to the landfill anyway. So that's a problem. I think the other question will be addressed later. Okay? Ms. Jarrett, you had one?
Yes, sir. Franklin City Council, let me start off by thanking those of you who took the time out of your already busy schedules to respond back to our previous emails and phone calls. We strongly believe that if we are going to move forward with bridging the gap in the community, then it has to be done together as a community. That means that every voice needs to be heard. With that being said, our group, changing the narrative, is extending an invite to each of you to attend one, if not more, of our monthly meetings, which are held on the first and third Tuesday of each month. We believe that there are many issues within the community that need to be addressed. However, two of the primary focuses should be the children of the community and bringing the races together. We are in the process of compiling the information that we've received from the community and we would love the opportunity to formally present it to you in the near future. The time to act is now and how we choose to act is what will make the difference for our loved ones, friends, children, and grandchildren. Thank you. Kashif Carter, and he asked that I share his contact information as well. His cellphone number is seven five seven three four six eight three six zero. That was seven five seven three four six eight three six zero. And email address, kashif.carter@yahoo.com. And then kashifsspeaklifecarter@gmail.com.
And thank, thank him for his comments. Do I have any amendments to the agenda? If not, we'll move to the consent agenda. We have the approval of the May tenth, twenty twenty-one meeting minutes. Any corrections or additions to those meeting minutes? Hearing none, I'll inter, I'll accept a motion to approve as presented.
Hope you.
Second.
I have a motion, do I have a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Then we have the Adult Abuse Preventative Month Resolution. Mr. Smith, I'll ask you, please, to read that.
Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fourteen, Adult Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas during fiscal year twenty twenty, Virginia Adult Protective Services received over thirty-seven thousand reports of adult abuse, negative, neglect and exploitation. A nine point six percent increase from the previous year. And whereas older Virginian, Virginians and Virginians with disability may be targets for abuse, which can occur in families and communities of all social, economic, racial, and ethnic backgrounds. And whereas in order to reduce the incentive, incident of adult abuse in Virginia, there are a number of prevention programs that provide vital services to at-risk populations, including a twenty-four hour hotline, crisis intervention, emergency shelter, home-based and community service, public education, and legal advisory. And whereas local departments of social services use technology and creativity to reach survivors of maltreatment during the COVID nineteen. And whereas Adult Abuse Prevention Month offers Virginians the opportunity to participate in community efforts to improve the safety and well-being of people throughout our Commonwealth, to recognize the organizations and individuals who serve them and to remember those affected by abuse, adult abuse. And whereas the Virginia Department for the Aging and Rehabilitive Services, home to the State Adult Protective Services Division, collaborates with local departments of social service to help older Virginians and Virginians with disabilities live free of abuse, neglect, and exploitation. Now, therefore, I, Frank M. Rabel, Mayor, do hereby recognize May twenty twenty-one as Adult Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Franklin, Virginia. And I call this observance to the attention of all citizens. Reclaim this twenty-fourth day of May, twenty twenty-one.
Do I have a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash fourteen?
So, bud.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Ms. Jarrett, if, if someone feels that they have something they need to report on this, how, how would they go about doing that?
For adult abuse, I will look to Ms. Rexrode to correct me. They can call our local Department of Social Services and file a report. And then I believe there's a twenty-four hour hotline that can be called as well. And also, I believe if you were to reach out to dispatch, then that would be connected to the appropriate individual with social services. We do have an on-call individual for those types of matters. If it were to be someone that didn't have access to the twenty-four hour hotline, so there's several options.
I would encourage anybody who's going through anything like that to make sure they do contact. It probably wouldn't be a bad idea for us to put it on our website, that hotline number. And, and a direct number to social service.
We can do that.
Thank you very much. Next, we have a Western Tide Water Free Clinic update, Ms. Jarrett?
Yes, I would like to ask Mr. Waller to come to the podium. As you know, every year, the Western Tide Water Free Clinic comes to update us on their activities. They are definitely an amazing resource for us to have in the community and serve a large number of Franklin citizens. So we're thankful for his presence with us this evening and for the update.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the Franklin City Council. My name is Wanda Waller and I serve on the Board of Directors for the Western Tide Water Free Clinic. I want to start off by saying on behalf of the clinic's board of directors, we would like to thank you for your past support and for your consideration about twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two budget requests. We are thankful and we are grateful for the City of Franklin's financial investment in Western Tide Water Free Clinic since two thousand and seven, which has created a healthily whole of thousands of patients in need of our services. In twenty twenty, there were nine thousand nine hundred and forty-two visits to the clinic, serving one thousand two hundred and twenty-three patients, of which one thousand six hundred and thirty-seven were dental appointments, serving five hundred and twenty-eight dental patients. Eleven percent of these patients were from the City of Franklin, representing a hundred and twenty-eight people served, which included one public school employee from your city. It is your support that makes it possible for us to provide those chronically and often critically ill patients with life-saving, comprehensive, coordinated care through the many services offered on-site at the clinic. And they include medical, dental, vision, pharmacy, and mental health through our specialty referral partnership network. This continued support has been especially important as we have remained open throughout the twenty twenty pandemic, serving our patients so that they would not have to make unnecessary visits to hospital emergency rooms in order to seek medical care. Over the past year, we've continued to strive towards supportive shared goal to improve the health of our patients and to enable them to take care of themselves and their families, keep their jobs, and be productive citizens. It is with the community's help that patients like C.H. could access critical health care at the clinic during this pandemic. C.H. is a forty-eight-year-old uninsured female who works full-time as an adult daycare worker and has been a patient at the clinic since twenty thirteen. C.H. has been diagnosed with multiple chronic illnesses. She is currently on twenty-two medications, four of which are blood pressure medications. Due to her need for regular blood pressure monitoring, it has been necessary for her to be seen in person at the clinic even during this pandemic, even though she needed to limit her public exposure. C.H. was thrilled when she received an in-home-use blood pressure cuff, purchased with special COVID funding and her recent EVMs endocrinology appointment on-site at the clinic. Having this in-home blood pressure cuff means that C.H. can be monitored constantly, leaving her providers with a bit of less, with a bit less concern that she may suffer a critical or life-threatening episode at home or at work. This monitoring also makes her a much better candidate for telehealth. C.H. was so grateful for what the clinic provided for her that she expressed her appreciation by simply saying, this is wonderful. Thank you so much. As it has been for so many organizations and individuals, the twenty twenty pandemic was incredibly challenging for the clinic. However, it has also brought great success. Our medical director, Dr. Stephen Greer, was honored by as a primary care physician, health care hero by Inside Business Magazine, nominated for his leadership of the clinic during the pandemic. We also implemented telehealth as an option for our patients and we launched a new online patient application that has helped reach more patients in need of our services, which by the way is one of the main focus areas of our new strategic plan. This year, twenty twenty-one also brought bittersweet excitement to the clinic with the retirement of our beloved Executive Director Chad Hart and dentist Dr. Charles Rawls. And we've also brought onboard a new Executive Director, Ron Stewart, and a dentist, Dr. Adams, both of whom have jumped right in to keep operations flowing at the clinic. And I do hope that you all will get an opportunity to meet both of them real soon. Again, I want to thank you for your consideration about twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two funding requests, which is in the sum of forty thousand eight hundred dollars, which will cover the annual cost of care for about four hundred and eight clinic visits of thirty-four residents of the City of Franklin. Our annual cost of care per patient is about one thousand two hundred dollars. So last year's clinic cost to serve the City of Franklin patients was almost a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Again, we want to thank you for your investment in the mission of the Western Tide Water Free Clinic and you are welcome to tour the clinic and see firsthand how your investment is helping those in need of medical care. Again, I thank you for your time and I do thank you for your support.
Thank you and thank, and thank all the people at the clinic for the wonderful job they're doing. It is appreciated, thank you very much. Financial matters, Ms. Jarrett?
Yes, I will start this section by saying more to come. As I've shared with you in your Friday update, we received some interim guidance on the American Rescue Plan and at five fifty-two, Ms. Spence just got additional guidance. And then we just received an update from the National League of Cities about ten minutes ago. So I'm gonna just quickly move through these slides. I don't want us to get caught up too much on it this evening. As always, prior to us spending any of these funds, we'll come to council with an outline of how we recommend they be spent. We know as of earlier today, well, at the end of last week, that we were destined to get at least one point five million, but several things have transpired over the last few hours where we expect to receive additional dollars and to have our allocation increased. So again, I'm just gonna quickly move through these slides and there's lots of additional reading and research that we as the staff have to do to ensure that we're in compliance with the requirements of the American Rescue Plan Act. But we will come back to you with a full, a full plan of how we would recommend that we spend those funds over the next few weeks to come. So just at a very high level, and this is being covered at great length at the, in the national news and the news media. And I know several of you have participated in different webinars that have been held recently with some of our elected officials. But there's four main categories of how you can spend the dollars. But there's four main categories of how you can spend the dollars. Clearly, this was, you know, in addition to COVID response, it's an infrastructure bill to a large degree. So public health response to the COVID emergency is a piece of it. Recovery for the localities that may have experienced revenue loss is a piece of it. As you all know, we haven't, you know, fortunately been a community that's experienced tremendous revenue loss. There were a few months and in a few categories where we did see a loss. But overall, as a whole, especially from a sales and meals tax perspective, we've done quite well. There's assistance allowed for households and businesses, and then overcoming like health and economic challenges as well. A lot of these things we talked about as a part of like the CARES Act's perspective as well, and again, it goes into additional detail. One of the things that it also allows in this case is rehiring of staff that may have been eliminated in the past, which, you know, we were able thankfully to not furlough individuals. However, there are additional staffing needs that we have, as you know, because of frozen positions that we've had in the budget, especially in the EMS category, and then assistance to the tourism, travel, and hospitality industry. So that is an area that we also could have allowable uses of the funds. Addressing health disparities is another section where you can use the funds, and then assistance with homelessness, and it gets into a number of socioeconomic issues or allowable expenses of the funds as well. The lost revenue I've already addressed, that's not really one that we can, you know, say we've experienced here locally. The main area that, based on our preliminary conversations with the staff, we are gonna come to you and recommend we focus is on the water and sewer infrastructure. As you all well know, we have tremendous issues, especially in certain parts of the city, with our water and sewer and storm drain infrastructure that cause other quality of life issues. And with the minimal amounts that we're funding it in the budget each year, we're just not able to get ahead of it. We're honestly piecemealing the approach instead of having a full funding effort. So, you know, clearly, we'll have additional detailed discussions about these funds, but the main recommendation that I feel like in this moment in time, based on what we know, so I'll caveat it with that, is that we really look at our water and sewer infrastructure. Now, there's additional requirements, and you'll see in Ms. Spence and I had this conversation this morning, in parentheses under water and sewer, you see additional guidance to be released at later date. So we've gotta wait on that. And then the other thing that we have to tie it to, and we're gonna have to work with Public Works on, is making sure that we are tying it to the two federal mandates that are listed, the Clean Water Act and the Drinking Water Fund. So again, that's gonna require additional detailed research for us to do to come back to you. We have, as you all have seen over previous years' budget processes, a number of pent-up demands with improvements to our transmission system, so the lines, the water and sewer lines, and then as well as the wastewater treatment plant. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to spend the majority of our dollars on on those things. Broadband is a hot topic, but we've honestly made a tremendous amount of progress in the city with providing various access points to Wi-Fi. You know, it was required for us to be able to have the students to do their work from home. So I feel like we've made great strides in that arena, especially with grant money, CARES Act money, and then reallocation of some local funds. But that's also an allowable expense. This is the big thing that I wanna, if we don't hear anything else tonight, based on the conversation, is that we know we need to look at one-time expenses. This influx of cash that'll come to the localities is not anticipated to occur again. So we don't want to take on things and projects that will become recurring costs because we know that this funding is limited. We have to spend it by twenty twenty-four. And we, if we were to pursue projects that are recurring, then at some point, we'll have to pay for those with local funds. So we need to really look at this as more of one-time expenses, capital investments, things that we're doing one time so that it's not later a negative impact to the local budget. So that's really important. And then the other thing that we need to do, and again, this is going to require some strategy behind it, is and it's recommended that we pair this and leverage it with other grant opportunities. So if there's grants that are available for certain things already at the federal and state level, we should pursue those and then layer this funding in. So they don't want it to supplement that, so discourage us from pursuing the other federal and state opportunities. They want you to continue to pursue those, but layer this funding in so that you take advantage of all of it. Again, I hit on this, but we'll have until twenty twenty-four to spend to spend the money. So it does need to be a thoughtful process, and how we spend it will be analyzed. As you all know, we went through two years ago the bond rating process, and we'll be doing that again, as you're aware, to reaffirm our bond rating. So all of how we approach this is very important to that greater level overlooked to the financial state of the city as well. So that's where I'm gonna stop. I was at another meeting right before this one, and again, we've received a series of emails over the last few hours that we need to analyze. So that's really kinda where I wanna leave it tonight, unless there's a specific question that you have. I gave you a lot of information in your in your agenda and your Friday update, but we have a lot more work to do to really. This is just the start of the conversation. I did get a note just a few minutes ago as well that this will be a topic of discussion at our upcoming CAO meeting that we have on Wednesday. So lots more to read, lots more to learn. Those key points that we talked about are gonna be critical for us moving forward. But we wanna make as big of a positive impact on the city for the citizenry as we can with this one-time influx of cash, but we need to be very thoughtful and strategic about it. So that's where I'm gonna stop unless there are any questions on that.
Anybody have any questions?
Um, yeah, well.
Probably premature.
I have one, and and well, it's sort of a comment, basically. I was on one several of the town hall meetings with Congressman Scott, and he said, "Part of the plan," I don't know if this is part of it or it's coming later, we don't, I don't think we know at this point, "but part of the plan was human infrastructure also, where it could be used for other things other than, you know, water, sewer, et cetera, and so forth." But I think the other part was, he mentioned it could be used for repairing schools and so forth.
I think I think we're talking two different animals.
Yeah.
One of them is the infrastructure bill, which they're talking about, which is a different thing for earmarks and those kind of things, which is separate from from this piece, but they could layer into some of this. Is that the way I understand?
So certainly with this, there's allowable expenses for assistance with, as I briefly hit on, you know, addressing inequities in communities that have developed over time and several like socioeconomic categories that are allowable expenses. Again, we just need to have an opportunity to dive more into it and weigh out what the greatest impacts the city will be. But then we also know, and you all heard it at the presentation previously by the school system, they received four streams that they talked about of their CARES Act money, and then they're anticipating additional funds as well for schools in a lot of categories. And they're in the same position we're in, reading and analyzing all this federal guidance because there's some that's gotta has to be dedicated towards learning loss. There's some that's for the physical structure of the schools and all those things. So there's a large influx of federal dollars across all communities in the United States, and then lots of regulatory restrictions that we're all trying to navigate as well. So more to come on this topic for sure.
I think you're doing a great job. Keep up the good work.
And I'm sorry to attach all the information to your Friday email, but I did think it was relevant for you guys to understand the fact sheets.
Thank you.
So now we have the interim final report.
Interim final guidance. There's temporary guidance and then interim final guidance. And like I said, we'll, we've got a series of other emails this afternoon, so we'll definitely be updating you on that as well.
Well, we will leave it in y'all's capable hands.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you very much. Old and new business, Ms. Jarrett, I'll let you handle those.
Yes, sir. So the first item is the master agreement on terms and conditions for accepting state aviation funds. So as as you all know, especially those of you that serve on the airport board, there's state funding that's set aside for the airports across the Commonwealth. Some of those require grant-specific agreements to be signed, but each year, you all authorize me to execute this attached agreement. It's been reviewed by SANS, and this action just allows me to sign the agreement on behalf of the city and is required for us to be able to accept state funds for the support of the Franklin Regional Airport.
And we're already in so deep we can't get out anyway. Which is, it's a good thing. I mean, because if if not for them, we wouldn't have a lot of the things we have as far as runway improvements, move removal of some of the trees and so forth in the landing path. So it's a good thing. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Jarrett on on that one? I'll entertain a motion to authorize Ms. Jarrett to sign the master agreement on terms and conditions for accepting state aviation funds.
So be it.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Jarrett.
Sir, the next item is a recommended change to the Beautification Commission bylaws. You all appointed several, there were a number of vacancies on that group, and you all appointed several members to the commission, and the bylaws had not been revisited in a number of years. And one of the individuals that was appointed is actually not a city resident, but they own a business in the city of Franklin. And the commission has had a number of meetings over the last few months and weeks, and they've done a number of wonderful projects. And their recommendation was that we amend the bylaws to allow an individual who is either a citizen or owns or is employed by a business in the city of Franklin to serve on the Beautification Commission. I would say that there's also precedent for this across a number of voluntary commissions that we have in in the city of Franklin. Business Center Advisory Board is is one that certainly comes to mind. So this isn't outside precedent that's been set in the past. This brings in line the current makeup of the board and allows additional like broader sector volunteers. So I've not seen that group be any more active than they have been right now, and I think it's certainly the time that we focus on the aesthetics of of the city. So the staff would, you know, is bringing you this recommendation from the commission and would seek any action of council that you may wanna take.
Anybody have any questions for clarity?
No.
Any desired action at council?
I make a motion. We approve the bylaw changes to the Beautification Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. And thank thank them for us because it's it's making a difference. They're doing a nice job. I think we finally gave them a little bit of funding to do some things. Okay, next.
Yes, sir. So the next item is the Southampton County Courthouse update. So a few things that have transpired over the last week since the agenda was put together, that's great news to share. The County Board of Supervisors meets tomorrow night, and they, on their agenda, have consideration the lease for the former Hunterdale Elementary School. So they will be acting on that tomorrow night. We, the county, is ordering the temporary trailer for Ms. Jones, and that order will occur once the lease has been authorized to be signed tomorrow night. There were six general contractors who were pre-qualified to bid on the project. So those were A.R. Cheston Construction from Willmanston, North Carolina, Heartland Construction from Chesapeake, Kenbridge Construction from Kenbridge, Virginia, Oyster Point Construction from Newport News, W.M. Schlosser Company from Chesapeake, and then Vertexco Corporation out of Norfolk. There's a mandatory pre-bid meeting for these contractors, as well as their major subs, on Thursday, June third. So they will have at that point an opportunity to walk through the courthouse, and then bids are due on July thirteenth. And they will be publicly opened the following day at two P.M. in the Board of Supervisors room, and I'll plan to attend that bid opening on behalf of the city of Franklin. So that's the update. We're still on schedule, and things are moving along smoothly. And so we are planning to, again, open the bids July thirteenth and then have everyone moved out of the courthouse, as I understand it, around Labor Day, prior to Labor Day. So everything is still on schedule. And then our financing plan of action that we've discussed is also on schedule.
Is there any need for our two representatives to continue to to do anything, or will they just be summoned when they're needed?
Well, it's really, we're meeting on like an as-needed basis. The last meeting was to look at the interior of the facility. We haven't had a cause to meet at that point. Certainly, I will remind you prior to the bid opening if you'd like to attend, but I'm happy to attend on behalf of the city and report back out to you all on how that goes. So I'm sure that once a contractor selected, the group will have to gather again.
Thank you. Okay, move right along to your city manager report.
Yes. So again, as always, a number of things that have come up prior, like once the agenda's gone out. I'm happy to report, and as I've done for the last year and a half, start with COVID. The state's positivity rate is down to two point eight percent. So that's fabulous. We are having a vaccination event at Hayden Village on Friday from one to four. And then they'll be at the Carlesville Fire Department, which is also very close to our community, from five to eight. And that's the Johnson and Johnson vaccine. We're still trying to work through distribution to minors. There's a lot of complexities to that, so we're still trying to work through those logistics. But because the Pfizer vaccine at this point in time is the only one available for minors. But again, if anyone is interested in the Johnson and Johnson vaccine, that'll be available this Friday from one to four at Hayden Village Center. We have, and I'm thrilled to share this again, zero cases over the last seven days. So that's fabulous news as well. And as I shared, we're one of the highest vaccinated communities. We're the highest in our health district and one of the highest across the Commonwealth, so we're very proud of that. I will also stress that we have a number of vacant positions, and I'm starting to get very worried about our workload as we move into the spring and summer. So if you know anybody who's interested in a position, please have them reach out. There's a number of ways to apply. You can email your application to jobs@franklinba.com. You can put it in the drop box outside. You can drop it off in person. But please, if you know anyone interested in a position, have them reach out to us. We have about three hundred and forty thousand dollars in the COVID Utility Assistance Fund left. So again, if you know anybody who's been negatively impacted by COVID, they need to apply because once those funds are depleted, we don't anticipate them being reinstated. I sent this to you in your Friday email, but for the public that may be watching, the public hearing for the school board seats for wards four, six, and the at-large seat will be held on June fourteenth. Because we're still in a state of emergency, you can submit a public hearing statement electronically, but no one can be considered for the school board who's not nominated at that public hearing. That's in your city code. So if someone wants to nominate an individual for one of those three seats, it either has to be done via electronic nomination to thepublichearing@franklinba.com or in person here during that public hearing.
Which ward?
It's Ward four, Ward six, and the at-large seat. The Confederate Monument, I shared with you guys in your Friday email, but for the purposes of the general public, the low bid came in at thirty-five thousand dollars. We're just over that, which is great. U L had allocated sixty thousand as a budget for that. So there'll be a few additional expenses with the pad that has to be poured, but I'm thrilled that it came in at that price point. So we anticipate that that will be moved in mid-June based on the contractor's schedule and having the pad at the cemetery poured in advance for the monument to be moved. So we anticipate that that will be moved in mid-June based on the contractors' schedule and having the pad at the cemetery poured in advance for the monument to be moved.
Can you say who got the contract?
It is Hampton Roads Rigging, right, Ms. Barnes? That's the Hampton Roads Rigging was the low, low bid. And uh I was uh thrilled to go to an in-person meeting at the Hampton Roads Chamber last Thursday. Um, Serve was nominated and won the ones to watch award, so that was nice to be able to attend that ceremony in person. It's one of the first I've been to in a year and a half. Um, and then a few minutes ago, we were honored to have, and I'm sure the mayor and Councilman Johnson may speak to it, but the C E O of Feed America. Was here in the city of Franklin, so it was a great opportunity to be able to meet her and hear some of her thoughts about hunger and food insecurity. And then Ms. Rexro did share with me the A P S numbers, so for the public and for those in attendance, I'll just share those. And we'll certainly follow up with a update to the website, but the Adult Protective Services hotline number is one eight 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 three two three eight five eight. Again, that was one eight 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 three two three eight five eight. And then the main office number to the Department of Social Services is five six two eight five two zero.
Thanks for doing it.
Sure, and then you have a few flyers about upcoming activities and athletic leagues. I did hear uh late this afternoon that Wee B Jamin is being rescheduled, so the first one will not be this Thursday. I understand the first one is June tenth, I believe, but we'll make sure that the social media pages are updated. Um, and we are making final plans for our Independence Day celebration, uh, so we're excited about that on June thirtieth. And all of the um activities we'll have that'll bring back some sense of normalcy to the, to the community. And that's all I have unless there's any specific questions for me.
Anybody have any questions, uh, Ms. Jarrett? Thank you, thank you for that report. Uh, we'll move to uh council staff reports on boards and commissions, uh, anybody have anything? Just to echo, uh.
Yes, I have the jail board report.
All right.
The um jail board report from uh Western Tidewater Regional Jail. We have um. Uh, outer compliance would be a hundred and eighty, eighty-nine. Uh, D O C uh inmates, uh, Department of Correction. Uh, we have a high count of March um. Of uh seven hundred and fifty-five. Uh, we, we have um a calendar of uh seven hundred and forty, forty-six. Uh, we have um occupancy of D O C, uh, five hundred and fifty-two as of March uh two thousand twenty-one. Which is uh a hun, a hundred and thirty-five or percent. The occupancy is um one thousand seventy, we have seventy, seventy percent of that. Um, next we have uh the um. The expense um is seventy-five point ninety-eight percent uh allowed for fiscal um two thousand twenty-one. As of March uh thirty-first, two thousand uh twenty-one. And we have a balance uh in operation of three million seven hundred uh forty-five thousand, nine thousand ninety-two, ninety-two hundred and fifty-six cents. Uh, next we have um. As far as um operations, we have um. We hired seven, seven new uh employees, five um employees uh resigned. Uh, went, went to other positions, we have um one that was terminated and one uh retired. We have um one in the Portsmouth Academy and we have four in the Hampton Roads uh Academy. We have intake of two hundred and um eighty-three inmates, released uh three hundred and twenty-four. Uh, of that um six went to the emergency room, four uh was admitted. Three was by jail transport and three was by uh amelants uh transport uh as well. Next we have um. Um, a breakdown of uh mental, uh, mental health services, well, well, health services. Basically, we had um uh sick calls, one thousand five hundred and sixty-eight screenings, uh, a hundred and fifty-two. Um, we had a twenty-nine uh with diabetes. We had um lab of three hundred and um twenty-five. Uh, out medical appointments, thirty-one. Um, we had x-rays, thirty-three, doctors visits, uh, fifty-five, dental visits, uh, thirty-seven. And that's about all of that. Uh, we have um. Next would be um. Elected officers of um Western Tidewater, newly elected officers. We have um from Alabai County, um Rudolph Jefferson as chairman. We have um his vice, vice chairman, uh Everett E. C. Harris, who's the sheriff of Suffolk. And we have Secretary, uh, Linwood Johnson. And uh the other thing was basically um that we looked at was um the fact that um they were um. And, and that's his F, F C C rating, so we have a fifty-five, fifty-five dollar, fifty-five dollars a day. That, that we charge for, for the phone and the system, so, so we kept it at that. And the other part was um. Uh, two machines that we got a good deal on that cost uh two thousand nine hundred, two, two thousand nine hundred and eighty. Uh, no, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars uh for two. And that's a screening where you can't um enter contraband in from the front or, or the back of the jail. So now they can uh eliminate contraband coming in because it uh, the screening both in the back and the front. And uh the, the jail is um moving well, doing well financially and uh we're moving forward.
Thank you, I, I certainly don't wanna minimize the importance of what's going on in the jail. You know, it's, uh, I would think that maybe we ought to include a, maybe it either Ms. Jarrett's uh Friday updates or whatever, you know, those details. And then let's try to just hit anything that's gonna be uh germane to council as far as anything we may need to act on or any exceptions to, to, to good, to good things. Uh, I think then that way would, you know, I'm, I'm sure the citizens are probably uh not quite as interested in it as we are, so I mean, let's. If you, if you don't mind doing it, I think it would be, be better.
No, fine.
Better served.
I have no problem.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
I'd like to give a, update on the F S E D I board. I was asked to sit in on behalf of the city council, so I wanted to report to you that uh they had a Zoom interview with one gentleman. Uh, the gentleman was flown in and uh interview took place this morning, he has toured the area, so just to let you know, we are moving forward, they are.
Okay.
So it's just so y'all know what's going on. Good, thank you. And we got anything? Do you have anything? Anybody else have? We, we did have an H R uh transportation uh organization and H, H R uh planning district committee meetings. Uh, nothing uh of, of real difference came out of those, those meetings, they were just updates pretty much, so. Uh, I think any of the uh legislative uh updates we're sending to you when we get them. So if we have anything that comes up that will be important or germane, we'll, we'll pass it along. Also, I remind you some community events, we still have the uh cruise in going on, on, on Wednesday's uh farmer's market. Uh, I believe this Wednesday starts its first official Wednesday and that'll go through.
September.
September, I believe, so, and then you've got the information on, on uh, uh, the uh. Music uh as far as the Wee B Jamin. Uh, and we did have an opportunity to, to meet with the C E O of Feed America and it was a nice group there, you know, we're having a. Um, there were, Food Bank is investing a lot of money in the city of Franklin on six eighteen South Street and, and that's a, an interesting story in and of itself. And I would encourage uh all of us to get involved and help support that worthwhile endeavor uh with the Food Bank. Um, and that's, that's it, uh, do you have anything else, Ms. Jarrett?
I did just confirm the first Wee B Jamin will be June tenth and the band that was scheduled to play uh will play in August.
Thank you very much, okay. Not hearing anything else, I'll have, I'll accept a motion to go into closed.
I move that the city of Franklin, Virginia adjourned into closed meeting pursuant to authority granted by those sections of the Code of Virginia. Prefect of the agenda for the permitted purposes provided and to discuss those subjects described and set forth on the agenda.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstention, motion carries. Thank y'all very much again, be safe, be careful, and we will enclose, thank you.